Good morning, everyone, and Eid Mabarak to those that were celebrating yesterday and today. Welcome to this meeting of Corporate Governance and Audit Committee. My name is councillor Mahaly Franz-Mir, and I'll be chairing part of today's meeting. Today's meeting is being livestream on the council's website, so the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. Before I go on to invite members and officers to introduce themselves, I just would like to say a quick few words of thanks to an officer that has given a number of years to us here at Leeds City Council. It's a real privilege to put a few words together for Kate, for her many years of dedicated service to Leeds City Council. She's also been a very good hand in guiding me as a chair as Corporate Governance and Audit Committee. For over 20 years, Kate has been a vital part of the organisation, and in deep respect for her detailed knowledge in the council's constitution and decision-making processes, whenever anyone had to go through, had a tricky governance question. Kate was always the go-to person, and she's always been on hand to answer. She has held various roles in democratic services over the years, but in 2020, she found her home alongside the Internal Audit Committee team in corporate governance, and that has been her home expertise and commitment and her dedication to today's date. One of Kate's greatest strengths is a relationship she has built with officers and members alike. Her personable approach, her willingness to help, and her invaluable advice has made her a trusted colleague and a friend to many. And of course, there's always been a story to tell along the way, and we've all heard them, some of us have heard them. Kate has also been the mainstay of the Corporate Governance and Audit Committee for many years, ensuring that we do things properly, ensuring that we have good governance remains at the heart of everything we do here. Kate, your contributions have been truly invaluable. On behalf of everyone today, I would like to thank you for everything you've done, and we'll miss you, and we wish you all the very best for the future. Would you like to come in and say anything? No, okay. But thank you very much, Kate, thank you. So moving on to the main business, and we're now going to move on to inviting members and officers to introduce themselves. And please remember to turn off your microphones, thank you.
Good morning, everyone, my name's Elizabeth Gott, Corporate Governance Manager.
Kate Sadler, Principal Corporate Governance Manager.
Councillor Jane Dawson, Chapel Alton Ward.
Good morning, Isaac Wilson, councillor for Wheatwood.
Morning, John Garvanny, councillor Horst with Enroden Wood.
Good morning, Karen Bruce, councillor for Ardenley, and Robin Hoodward.
Good morning, everyone, Chris Rowlands, head of finance, Corporate Financial Management.
Good morning, Emma Camillo Price, Intelligence and Policy Service.
Good morning, Ryan Glenn, Senior Audit Manager.
Good morning, Brendan McGlocklin, Senior Audit Manager.
Morning, Angela Leacock, Head of Finance, Internal Audit.
Good morning, Claire Mattson, Head of HR.
Morning, Andrew Byram, Chief Digital Information Officer.
Good morning, everybody, my name's Andy Dobbin, and I'm the interim Assistant Chief Exec for People, Digital and Change.
Morning, everyone, I'm the other half of Andy, I'm the interim Assistant Chief Exec, Finance, Trade and Resources.
Good morning, everyone, Linda Wild, Independent Member.
Good morning, everybody, Conrad Hartbrook, councillor for Rothwell.
Good morning, everybody, councillor Bob Chesterfield from Middleton Park Ward.
And councillor Matthew Robinson from the Howard Ward.
Good morning, everybody, I'm Debbie Oldham, and I'm clerk to the committee.
Good morning, Jonathan Foster, Senior Head of Internal Audit, Corporate Governance and Insurance.
Thank you very much, just moving on to item agenda one, thank you, Debbie.
Shall I go through one to five? Thank you. Under agenda item one, there are no appeals. Under agenda item two, there's no exempt information. Under agenda item three, there's no formal late items. There has been some supplementary information circulated with the agenda, and that's to be dealt with as part of matters arising. Under agenda item four, could I ask members to declare any interests? I'll take silence as there are none. Under agenda item five, no apologies have been received, Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, are the minutes correct according to the meeting held, the last meeting on 24th February? Yeah, thank you very much, got nods there. And in matters arising?
Thank you, Chair, there are no formal matters arising from previous meetings, but Chris here will go through the Grant Thornton supplementary information with you, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Liz, thank you, Chair. So this is related to the final accounts audit for 2324, more specifically, the two items you've got within the supplementary items. As you'll remember, we brought the accounts to committee last month, they were formally approved by yourselves. Please to confirm that Grant Thornton signed those accounts off and issued an unqualified opinion a couple of days after that. So the reports you can see as part of your supplementary items today are their final reports in respect to that. They've asked us to bring these back again today, just to put them on public record and for committee to note those two reports. The key points, just to mention, there are no fundamental changes from either report. Both reports have been to previous committee meetings. So no fundamental changes, nothing to highlight today. It's purely for information, and it's just to wrap the audit up, basically. So happy to take any questions if there are any, thank you.
Any questions, just confirm, no, thank you very much, Chris. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to leave today's meeting to continue with Eid celebrations, and I'd like to ask if there are any nominations for someone to, for another member to appoint a chair, sorry, John? Councillor Garvanny, sorry, sorry? Okay, thank you, is anyone prepared to second it? Yeah, thank, thank you, councillor Bruce. Wish everyone that have a lovely, have a lovely week, and if you celebrate an Eid, have a lovely Eid, thank you very much. We're just about to swap thrones. Yeah, sorry about that, it's just I can't see anybody from, from that position, so thank you for that. And I don't know, wishing you a very happy day, councillor Franz-Mir. Right, shall we move on to agenda item eight, receipt of the internal audit planning report 2526.
Thank you, Chair. So this report today presents our approach to audit planning for the coming year. So we did move away a year or so ago from our prior approach of developing one long list of audits at the start of the year to a more dynamic and flexible approach as the year develops. So we've undertaken that planning process in accordance with both the existing and new internal audit standards, which come into force tomorrow. Within those standards, there is, I would say, an increasing recognition of the need for an audit plan to be flexible in nature and dynamic to the emerging risk environment. So our approach, I feel, gives us the confidence there to enable us to do that in the way that we identify, as you'll see in Appendix A, the key thematic areas and priorities that we know that we need to cover at the start of the year. So there will be statutory pieces of work which we must carry out in order to fulfil our remit and give assurances to the section 151 officer. There are certain pieces of work that we know we will have to commit to do at the outset, and areas which we identify at the start of the year are fundamental to that opinion in terms of the assurance that they provide. And we've outlined in the report some of those which align with much of the recognised best practice that's out there around the current risk environment in financial challenge, use of technology, the ongoing transformation across the council. We keep an eye on the organisational culture element of it, and we've been successful in audits that we've carried out in that area, and we plan to continue that into the coming year. But we do hold back a substantial portion of time to enable us to respond to emerging risk areas as the year progresses. And members may recall that throughout the year, in our update reporting cycle, we are increasingly extremely transparent now in providing that information around what our priorities are for the forthcoming period, what we've done, and any alterations as, as we go. So it enables that plan ultimately to be built up throughout the year. We do so with some established mechanisms around risk assessment, relations with senior officers across the authority, and obviously in today's report, we invite members to consider any areas of assurance that are required, and that's something that we plan to remind and prompt on throughout each update report as the year progresses. There's also a piece of work that is commencing between myself and the intelligence and policy manager to look further at our assurances in, in respect of those key risks on the back of suggestions made by the committee, and how we incorporate that further into our planning process, recognising the feedback from members that as the year progresses, we don't just want to be highlighting how the work that we do ties into risk, but also how we make decisions around what we might not do throughout the year, recognising that it's not possible to cover every risk that the council recognises. So Phil, the report sets out the information. In there, I've just given a quick talk through the main points of it. Going into the new year, our resources have been able to hold firm after some significant hits predating that. So at the moment, I do have that confidence that we have sufficient resource to be able to deliver that plan, recognising that there's always a need there for us to review how we audit and how we obtain assurances and work as smartly as we can, particularly with the incoming technology. So I'll stop there and invite members to raise any questions at this point, thank you.
Right, members, any questions? I'm sitting in this chair now, you should start first. Linda.
Thank you, thank you for that really helpful introduction. I think it says it prevents a lot of questions being asked, or preempt some questions being asked, I think. I think you've got 40% contingency in the plan, and I recognise the new standards do require that agility going forward, and that's great to see that you've got such a good contingency to enable you to do that. How does that contingency, forgive me, I can't remember, but how does that contingency compare to previous year's contingency at the start of the year?
Roughly the same, Linda, as, as last year. So prior to that, we'd held back, I would say, a smaller reserve of contingency. But one of the reflections on that was that we'd spent quite a lot of administrative time then where we'd needed to change the plan as the year goes on in response to emerging risks. And that was requiring us to spend quite a lot of time on justifying decisions that we were taking to change something that was already in there and bring something else forward. So rather than tie ourselves into that position, we've opted to hold back a more substantial contingency amount, and I would say that level is very consistent with what we did last year. And for me, at this point, feels an appropriate balance there between committing us to things that we know we must do, but then allowing that time as the year progresses to respond to emerging risks or priorities as the year goes.
Thank you. And again, with that in mind, and you mentioned earlier that you would let us know as a committee what areas are a high risk or a significant risk that, that you haven't been able to or haven't seen as a priority to review over the year. Will you bring that information back to us later on? And, sorry, is, just one, one more, and then I promise I've finished. Is there any area of risk that you have an eye on as you sit here today? That would be one of the, acknowledging you've got the agile approach, but acknowledging that tomorrow is the first of April. Are there any risk areas that's really high on your radar for coverage during the following, you know, the coming financial year?
Thank you, in answer to the first part of it, yes. So the continual evolution of our update reporting cycle, we want to bring clearer information in response to the points that you've, you've raised yourself over the last year around those decisions that are taken around what we do look at, and also where we may place reliance on other assurances when determining not to do certain pieces of work. In terms of focus on key risk areas at the moment, I think the report probably says a lot of this around the financial position that, that the council is in, and the need for that ongoing independent assurance on the transformational impact of that. So there's a lot of, obviously, service redesign going on across the authority. There's a role for us in an advisory capacity there around the design of control, the management of risk as new technology and transformation goes on across the council. And then further assurance around various pockets of activity that are going on to try to manage that budget position as successfully as we can. So I think lots comes back to financial risk, and obviously the knock-on effects of that as well. Does that make sense?
It does, and I think is helpful. I guess where, where my head's at at the moment is when I look back to the risk report that came to the committee, I think in November, there was a long list of other non-financial-related risks that I don't necessarily see referred to in the paper. So it's sort of those areas that I'm asking us better about more than anything.
Yeah, understood completely. I mean, we have done a cross-reference of corporate risks when, when we've put the plan together. Perhaps it would be helpful if I prepared a separate paper to supplement this one, to go through, I guess, more detail around what from those corporate risks link into what's in the plan now, and as we said before, what doesn't at this stage.
Thank you, I think that would be really helpful. It would give the committee assurance, wouldn't it, that the, the risks that the council's facing into have got a level of assurance over them from an independent path, such as yourself, that would be really helpful, thank you.
It is something that, as I say, we, we plan to build into the update reporting cycle, but as a kind of immediate sense check of where we are now, I'm happy to do that and to share that with the committee.
Yeah, thank you, Linda, that's, believe it or not, that's all the questions I was going to ask, and you've answered them. So unless anybody has, sorry.
Thanks, Chair. Jonathan, just turning to page 27 of the report, I'm picking up on Linda's theme of question there. There's four pillars, and the third one along is key assurance themes, and there's 22 bullet points in there to cover. Given what you've said about staffing and budget, can we realistically cover those 22 in detail for the year ahead, or is there a prioritisation within those 22?
It's a good question, and the, the reason we record them in that way is to recognise where one audit is going to cover much more than necessarily a single assurance theme. So we might look at something that links into one in particular, for example, something relating to cyber. But within there, there will be considerations about the value for money impact. There may be considerations from an employment perspective around the arrangements that we have in place with the workforce. There will be governance and decision-making elements of that. So these are quite broad brush themes in that respect. But the, I guess the trick is with the plan that we need to have that appropriate breadth and depth of coverage. So those assurance themes help us throughout the year, give ourselves a bit of a check and challenge, if you like, that we've, we've got some coverage that covers that. And if we identify, for example, an issue, whether that is directly in the scope of the audit that we're doing, or as I say, one of the peripheral issues around other areas impacting, with that reserve of contingency that we, that we have, we're then able to consider, perhaps do we need to do a deeper dive piece of work into one of those other assurance themes? So I think it's a very fair question, because there's a lot of them. We've developed that list over the course of time ourselves to give ourselves that kind of confidence that when we look back over the delivery of the plan, we've got reasonable breadth of coverage there.
Just a quick follow-up, if I may, Chair, yeah, I think that's, that's fair, and it's good to know that that's the way the thinking is working. The final one is on transformation and innovation that's there. You'd probably expect me to raise something around the nature of AI and the way it's coming in and it changing all the time. This being in, this document being published as it is, how are we going to keep reviewing that through the year? Because I think it's changing so fast, and I was with, I may have to be a little careful how I phrase this, I was with a well-known retailer last week who was telling me about changes thanks to AI within their business, which was great, but how customers were now using AI to essentially defraud the business as well to the tune of what was coming up to about half a million pounds a week. Now, that, that's huge sums of money, and this authority just cannot afford that, not that we'd want it anyway, but how are we working that through as a process as well?
Again, very good question. So I think we'd all say that the introduction of AI is exciting, but with it comes opportunity and comes risk, as you say now. I think from our perspective, there's twofold considerations here. One, how do we make use of technology to the best of our ability to support our audit programme? So how do we use that technology to broaden the assurance that we can give and incorporate that within our wider data analytics strategy? But then, as the council continues to consider the implications of artificial intelligence, whether that is the introduction of mechanisms, or whether that is the impact of certain AI risks, and I think there's some quite well-recognised fraud risks that come with that, we obviously need to, to keep live to that. And I'm going to ask Angela if she wants to, in fact, I can see Andrew, first of all, with his heads up, with his, with his hand up. There is an AI steering group that's been set up, so I'll let colleagues just come in and supplement that a little further.
Anyone who's got AI bingo going, they can stamp that one off on their card, because it goes about every meeting now.
Yeah, councillor Robinson, yeah, we have set up an AI steering group. We had the first meeting last week, which Andy chaired, and we put together an AI policy as well. But you, you're quite right, and I made this comment really quite strongly in the meeting, that it is evolving so quickly that trying to keep ahead of it is going to be difficult. We are already doing some really good things in, in the council around AI, specifically with Copilot and some things we're doing in social care that we're doing a trial. So we're going to have to work through the AI steering group, work really carefully on the, on the risks. I think the other thing to say is, and it was back to your point, AI isn't free, it, it's very expensive. You know, the, the cost of the licences, but then you, you need people within the digital service who can actually keep it running and make sure the guardrails are in place. So yeah, it is the new buzzword, I think it's the biggest shift in the workplace for many, many years, probably since the, the web came along, but we've got to get it right and be really careful with it.
Does anybody else want to come in?
And in terms of AI, I'm a member of the steering group, so we're keeping an, an eye on making sure we've got the right governance over what we're doing that will allow us to move quickly and agilely, but still have the right framework around that.
Matthew?
Thank you, that's really reassuring to know. Who's the member that this would report into in terms of democratic oversight for the working group? And how does that reflect back to the chair of this audit committee as well?
Yeah, hi, that'll be councillor Cooper, so I have a monthly meeting with councillor Cooper and an update. In fact, I had a good chat with her on Thursday last week on this exact subject, to let her know what we're doing in terms of our steering group.
Right. I just wondered, with AI, obviously it's a very specialist subject, and I wondered where the advice and the training has come from on AI? How, how staff have been upskilled on it, including the, the most senior staff in the council?
So talking to that specific point, we had a workshop about a month ago now. I think Victoria was there, and other members of Strategy and Resource S L T were there. And we had an afternoon going through training on Copilot, quite detailed in how to write prompts, how to get the best out of it. And I know Victoria was really, you were really interested in it and impressed with what she saw. So we're going to be looking to train that out more. Back to my point about it not being free, the Copilot licence is about between £280, £300 a year per seat. So if you times that up by a few thousand people, it suddenly starts becoming quite expensive. So we're trying to target those licences to the people where we know that they can get some benefits from the use of it.
I was thinking more strategy, AI, not, you know, how, how you use it on a computer, because they're spending a lot of money on it, where to put it, and to what, what to use it for, that kind of thing.
I think that'll come out through that AI steering group. So as I said, we're doing a trial in, in adults and children specifically to look at where we think we can get some benefits for staff. So in terms of social care and transcription of meetings, where the AI can use it to actually upload it straight into Mosaic rather than them to go back to the office and then handwrite it and upload it. We're working really closely with industry partners like AWS and Microsoft, so they're obviously doing use cases right around the country in local government, and then bringing them back to us where we can sort of say, well, that's something that could work for Leeds. We're going to be doing a hackathon in, I think it's in April, with planning, which is going to be held over at Nexus, specifically to look at how can we use AI within the planning cycle to improve the services there. So it's a combination of things we're doing ourselves in terms of Horizon Scan and see what's going on, but then working with the big vendors around what they're doing and trying to share practice.
Only being used in social care at the moment, then?
No, so the Copilot licences are across about 300 seats across the council in various offices. We've got a specific trial in adults and in children's, and there's 100 in each, licensed in each area that we're setting up and going to start going through that trial. But more things will come out as, as we move forward.
Councillor Robinson.
Thanks, Chair. So I suppose I should declare an interest in that I work for Tech UK as well. And so many of those companies that Andrew's just mentioned, I know and do work with. I think probably what we need to be clear on for the benefit of officers and those watching would be, to councillor Bruce's question, that would be the AI that the council is introducing through its systems. What we can't account for is if I decide I'm going to use ChatGPT to write a council speech or something like that, and how we're using other bits of AI across individuals in the service. So I, I think where it's through Copilot or a function like that, that's really clear, but there'll be others. And incidentally, I think there's probably other partners that this council work with who use AI, which no doubt Andrew is starting to think how our attention turns to them as well and, and what they're doing. Because the, the risks are potentially huge, but the benefits might be massive as well here.
Could I just say, I think this is such an interesting issue and such a big issue. I'll speak to councillor Franz-Mir after the meeting to see if perhaps we could bring this as an agenda item, because the risks, as well as the benefits to the council are so great that I think it would be worth a separate agenda item. So is, is that okay with everyone? Right, any more questions? Okay, so we've got some recommendations. So firstly, does the committee agree with the recommendations I set out in the reports, page 19? And secondly, we've got a, a review coming anyway, but to review and approve the approach of internal audit 2526. Yep, okay, right, thank you. Move on to agenda item nine, annual assurance report.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I'm going to briefly introduce this item, and Claire and I are going to give you a quick summary of the paper and the appendix that you've had in your pack. Just to say to the committee that this is our annual assurance report in relation to employment policies and employee conduct. Our focus is obviously to provide assurance to this committee that the internal control arrangements are in place for employment policies, and to assure you that those procedures are up to date, fit for purpose, well embedded across the organisation, and are fairly applied. Every year, what we do is we always make clear that our general approach to this assurance paper is to stress that they are underpinned by, underlined by the best council ambition, by the organisational plan, obviously very much governed by our people's strategy, which we introduced in 2020, which will expire later this year, which I will mention a bit later. Obviously, underpinned by our very explicit values and behaviours that we've had in place across the organisation for some time. But also relevant is our communications and engagement framework that we've had for a number of years too. The appendix in your paper sets out most of the detail, and the reference period for it is January 24 to December 24. But perhaps just to stress that much of the content of this paper has been subject to the relevant scrutiny board considerations throughout the year. Some of it's also progressed to the executive board as well. And in the paper, we just set out some more detail on that on page five, just so you can see where the relationship between this committee and scrutiny board is. So I'm going to pass over to Claire, who's just going to give you a quick, brief summary of the key highlights of the appendix. of the key highlights of the appendix.
Thank you, Andy, good morning. So just in terms of the defining documents, we've well-established processes in place, making sure that we are remaining A CAS and legally compliant in terms of our employment policies. Much of the details of policies and procedures are well-established and documented on insight pages, new for 2024. We've got a focus session now on performance toolkit, really looking at, from an organisational team and individual performance perspective, really bringing lots of tools together that we already had in place into one section on insight, making it really clear in terms of our performance approach across the organisation, which will support managers in managing performance locally. Andy's already touched on the link with the organisational plan, and that really clearly sets out the expectations of managers and leaders in terms of supporting their teams to be their best. In relation to our communication, we've got well-established communication routes, particularly for new starters, through the new starter process and induction, which is supported by managers locally as well as an event centrally. Our communication and engagement framework has been underway for a number of years now and is a well-established route for getting messages out to staff. We've also relied on using our Be Your Best management training route as well as our EDI training that's been delivered across the organisation over the last 12 months, continuing from work that's been previously done. Those sessions are attended well and we monitor attendance and the evaluation of those sessions. We've also this year extended our Be Your Best community, which is originally piloted with around 500 managers, just to bring managers together to support each other. That's now opened up to all managers that are appraising managers and is well utilised to help support each other through different scenarios. In terms of the embedding of all of our policies and procedures, obviously it is our managers' responsibility to manage individuals locally, in line with policies and procedures, and they are supported by HR in doing so. We've had a lot of focus around attendance management over the last year, with key services being supported by the HR team where required, and a real focus on early resolution, on casework. In terms of consultation engagement with all new policies and procedures or any changes, we work with trade unions and we've got a strong working relationship with them as part of the consultation process and also supported by information from networks and Freedom Speak Up guardians. In terms of the new HR system that is due to be implemented in April, we've made sure that that aligns with our policies and procedures, which will help again support managers in managing any issues or areas locally. Our registration of interest, register of interest, sorry. We receive declarations annually on that and we've got good engagement through that. So just in terms of monitoring, we don't have a staff survey in 2024, so we've not got any new results. We're responding to 2023 survey and work has been ongoing over the last year to respond both corporately and locally to issues and areas that were raised within the staff survey. New surveys to take place in 2025, within the next couple of months. So next time we come through to the meeting, we will have further updates. And then just in terms of the refine, sorry, review and refine, regular benchmarking with the region and looking at what other organisations are doing, particularly core cities and anchors within the city, as well as professional bodies, working closely with internal audit, particularly reference to the culture that Jonathan mentioned earlier, in terms of that's been reviewed and, you know, confirmation that well-established values and behaviours and positive findings, any issues that were identified were addressed locally. And then our survey of internal control, we've had a good response against that again for 24. Over 95% in most categories were confirming that they understood what was required of them and where to find information. There are a couple of areas where there's a slight, obviously, reduction in that level, but no significant areas of concern, with it just being a few people sporadic in different areas across the organisation. So I'll just hand back to Andy for just the final improvement section of the report.
Thank you, Claire. Yeah, also mindful that what we do want to do obviously is always thinking about how we can continue to approve the assurance in our applications of our policies and our procedures. I think the key issue, I guess, to stress is the issue that Claire's just raised, which is after a number of years working on the CBT programme, the Core Business Transformation Programme, headed up by Victoria to my left as Chair of that board. We're now just seven days away from launching the new HR and payroll system, which will be a really significant development for the organisation. That really enables us to exploit digital opportunities for managers and staff. So all staff for the first time will have access to our systems, whether they are frontline or office-based. So we can really remove the digital divide to enable all staff to have access to organisational information, to their own data, and able to update and go through a whole range of different employment policies and processes, whether that is, for example, looking at their interactive pay slip or booking leave, sorting out their overtime expenses and the like. And my people is the managerial element of that. So managers can also utilise that information and manage their data and reporting accordingly. So that will be a significant area of improvement for us over the coming few months, which obviously we'll report back this time next year in terms of progress of that. The other big issue to note for this committee, which I've referenced earlier, is the work we are now doing on the new people's strategy. So we're coming to the end of the natural life of the people's strategy, which has served as well, but will expire this year. We're doing a fair bit of engagement on the content of that. And we did go to the relevant scrutiny board at the back end of last year to talk to that committee in terms of what they would like to see and hear in our emerging people's strategy. Still early days, so we've got more work to do on that, but obviously we will develop that over the coming few months. Mindful too that there's obviously going to be some likely changes to the employment legal framework. So we are working and thinking through the impact of the Employment Rights Bill, which was announced last month. So we're working through the content of that and what that might mean for assurance across this organisation. And also recognising Claire's point about the staff survey, which is imminent, which will take place over the next two to three months. And that will give us a real strong sense in terms of feedback and engagement right across the organisation. As an organisation, we'll continue to focus our effort on EDI, which Claire has mentioned, our commitment to leadership development, supporting our 2,200 managers that we employ, and also focusing on the wellbeing offer and appropriate toolkits. So there's plenty for us to do, but hopefully what we've set out gives you the assurance that we're in a strong position with more work to do. So perhaps if Claire and I pause there, Chair, and invite any questions or comments?
Thank you. Questions? Gosh, Linda?
Thank you. A really interesting paper, I really enjoyed reading this paper, thank you. I guess I'm back to internal audit really, and asking whether there's any internal audit focus around people policies, given the importance of our people, there's so many of them. We've got to get it right for them, we've got to get, you know, enable them to get it right for themselves and for the council as an organisation. And it links back to culture for me, Jonathan. Is there anything in the internal audit plan that needs to cover this? Or are you planning to cover this? And if so, what would that be and when would we see something on it?
Happy to take that question. So I guess taking the policy element of it first, and probably links into councillor Robinson's question to an extent around how different audits will span into different themes and sometimes give us a reflection from an employment perspective around certain issues that there are to tackle. And that's where I think it's important that I have that regular engagement with the likes of Andy and the team. So that if there are issues around the policy framework to consider there, for example, and some examples you might throw out there, might be employee outside interests when we're looking at certain pieces of work. Obviously, the range of policies that we have in place from an EDI perspective and thoughts around that that are pertinent to that, then I have that direct route in to Andy and his leadership team to be able to hold some discussions around any reflections that we need to have policy-wise there. And I feel that that is sometimes more effective as a mechanism than perhaps us carrying out a detailed policy review, recognising that there is already a framework of policy reviews that goes on within the HR function, which I think is referenced within this report. That said, those considerations always remain on the table should we feel there needs to be a broader look at a certain policy area. From the culture perspective, so you may recall, we did the wider piece of culture work a couple of years ago now that looked at the overall arrangements in place for how well-established the values and the expected behaviours are. That came out with a number of themes and recommendations, which I think Andy and the team, many of which they're already in train with. And I think the assurance report you've just received shows the wealth of work that goes on there to constantly reflect on and improve practices there. Last year, we did a more targeted piece of culture work in a certain area so that we could have a deeper dive into that area. Quite a lived experience piece of work, how does it feel? What are perceptions in that area? What does that say around the values? What does that say around the culture? That report doesn't just go locally to the service, but as Claire mentioned, it goes to HR as well for certain considerations around that. So any issues that can be considered within the Be Your Best manager training, the appraisal framework and things like that. We're looking to replicate a piece of targeted culture work in the coming year. So that is referenced in our internal audit plan as one of our emerging priorities. The decision that will need to be taken will be where? Because there are lots, in a vast organisation like this, obviously there's lots of areas that could pop up as interesting to look at there. And that's down to our ongoing risk assessment to help steer us in the right direction for where we look. And then finally on that, and I think we've had this discussion in the past, is that the lens of culture within any audit, so any finding that we have around, for example, a potential control issue or a compliance issue within a service, it isn't always just procedural, there are culture reflections on that. What does that say about the culture in that particular area? And again, I think in broadening the output of our work, so it isn't just a silo report into one service area, but so that we have that reporting back into the HR leadership team, helps us to tackle and identify these issues as we go. So hopefully that helps a bit.
Yeah, it states in the report that members of staff register any interest that they have. I just wondered what happens with any conflicts of interest and what the procedure is with that?
Yeah, if we've got any conflicts of interest that are arisen, that would go through the managers. So there would be a conversation locally at manager level to see what the conflict was and whether or not that could be appropriately managed. And obviously, if it couldn't be, then that would be dealt with on an individual basis.
Yeah, what if it's the manager that's got the conflict of interest?
There is an escalation route, so it would go up through the scale. So ultimately, right up to chief exec. And if it was the chief exec, it would go to the leader for that to be looked at and assessed.
Thanks, Chair. Just a question in relation to the define and document piece, if that's okay. In preparing for this meeting, I was having a look at some of the internal documents on the Intranet and have a look at the Employee Code of Conduct that was there. And you'll be pleased to know I'm not going to quiz you and test you on certain lines and things like that. But at the bottom of it, it says effective from the 1st of March 2013. It doesn't say when it was updated or if it was or if it was reviewed. So how do we go about reflecting that? Do we just show when something is effective from or do we need to show a process of when it's been reviewed for full transparency?
Thank you, councillor. That is one that we have actually started doing a review on over the last year. Work did pause on it because of changes that were coming through the Employment Rights Bill. So as I mentioned in the paper, we have got a, you know, kind of a schedule of when policies will be reviewed. We have started the work on that one, but we had to reprioritise some of the resources to look at some of the different changes that were coming through so we could react to the legislative changes. So it is on our list and it is underway in terms of update. But I can take your point away in terms of it's just showing when it was last, or when it was established rather than when it was reviewed. So we can take that away and make sure that that's updated as part of that process.
I'm assuming it has been reviewed since 2013, okay, right. How do we go about, because there'll be a huge host of these documents that are available as well. So is there a process where we say every five years they're going to get reviewed or once the legislative change? How do we go about setting that out so that we've got, so we're clear on that?
The process that we currently follow in is obviously, if anything does need to be reviewed earlier, then we've currently got it scheduled for. So we've scheduled over a number of years for each policy to be reviewed. And then obviously, if something changes either legislatively or culturally or something that we need to kind of look at, we would bring that forward. So we have got a schedule of all the policies listed, when they're due to be next reviewed, when they were last reviewed. So that's documented and held by HR. We are looking at whether or not there's opportunities to use any of technology to do that better in terms of holding papers and particularly getting sign-off with colleagues when we're working on the consultation with trade unions. Because we have got, you know, some of it has been paper-based in the past, so we need to refresh that approach. So that is something else that we're looking at.
Right, and going back on councillor Bruce's point, just a quick question from me, if I may. And it's around the transparency of declarations of hospitality gifts and interests of officers. Obviously, as elected members, we're very used to it. Not only do we have to declare our interests, but our partner's interests, our family's interests and so on. Because no one ever sees what the declarations are, how would somebody question whether an interest has been included or excluded from somebody's declarations of interest, gifts or hospitality?
So in terms of any declarations, that would go back to managers to let them know what declarations have been made. So obviously, it is, we're relying on people making sure that they're doing their declarations. Obviously, if anybody was working alongside colleagues and that declaration hasn't been made. We also publish declarations of interest for chief officers and above as well. So that is published on the data mill, so that is available for, you know, the public to see as well. So there is quite a robust process around that. And obviously, we're constantly trying to remind people to do that. And I suppose one of the developments with the new system, we will have a facility to be able to share information with new starters as an example. But moving forward, there is opportunities to be able to use the system to push things out to everybody across the organisation. And when we say everybody, it would mean everybody. At the minute, we have got some staff that are digitally excluded. The implementation of the new HR and payroll system will ensure that everybody is digitally enabled. So we'll be able to push things like a policy or a declaration out to everybody. And then we'll have that full record of exactly what people have declared. And then we've got the routes through the managers to feed that back. And obviously, if we've got particular areas where we've got no declarations coming through, it gives us opportunity to explore that further. And potentially, that would be something that we'd potentially link with audit on to make sure that the message is getting round to appropriate people.
That's fine. It's just I see declarations of interest as a protection for staff, because if they've declared something, then actually it's upfront, it's out there, as opposed to hiding things away and not knowing, in which case it can be exploited potentially. So I think it is a great protection for staff to be able to do that. Right, any more questions? Okay, we'll move on to the recommendations then, please. Page 39 of your pack, required to receive this report. Attached appendix one, which provides forms of assurance on the robustness of the council's employment policies and procedures to manage employment conduct. So we're all happy with that. Excellent. So agenda item 10, Liz, Proposed Work Programme and Member Development Plan. I know, I'm just looking over there.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so these documents are proposals for the forthcoming year as to the work to be received by committee for 25, 26, broadly following the timetable that we've received in previous years. The dates that are on there at the minute are pencilled in at the minute. We cannot confirm them until after full council meeting in May. And then after that date, your invites will be sent out. Appendix B is the Member Development Plan, following SITF guidance as to best practice of what information committee members should receive to enable you to do your jobs effectively on the committee. Both appendix A and B are adaptable and can be adjusted to receive anything that you deem necessary to fulfil the terms and references of the committee. So it's just there for information and any comments that you may have. Thank you.
Any comments? Any questions? Of course, you're all desperate to come back next year, I can tell, because this is the best committee on the council. And Kate's nodding, she's going to come back. We obviously don't know about the next meeting, but, I mean, I've been on this committee for two years now. I find it really exciting, because you get to delve into a lot of things. Scrutiny is fantastic and you scrutinise individual things, but this has a breadth of coverage across the whole council, which I think sometimes people don't recognise. So thank you all for your attendance, thank you for your questions and your interest. I think it's great. And thank you to the officers at the end of the year. I don't know who you're going to be seeing next year, hopefully it'll be us, but thank you for all your work as well. And I call the meeting to an end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.